Call the order to the City Council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 is now five o'clock with secret police call.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Good.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn the court please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Safe today.
First of all, the swearing in of Officer Kalanin. Chief.
Can I ask that you stand by the mic? So then everyone can hear. Thank you.
Officer Lance Kalanin, he just recently completed his field training program with us and is out working on his own now. So we have two oaths we take, one is the oath of office and then the second will be the oath of honor. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Lance Kalanin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police officer for the City of East Grand Forks.
Police officer for the City of East Grand Forks.
County of Polk.
County of Polk.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's the oath of office and that will be the oath of honor. Again, repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Open forum, opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may refer to staff, boards, and commissions for research and future council agenda as appropriate. Somebody in the audience would like to address the council that's not on the agenda tonight? If you do come up, please state your name and your address too, please. If you want to come up, go ahead.
Good evening, Council Mayor, Council Members, and City Administrators. I've called East Grand Forks home for the past six years. I went to school here. Today, I'm here to honor Officer Corinter for the way he responded to me on April 13th during a time when I was having crisis. His response was both professional and humane. He showed empathy and care. For that, I would like to say thank you, Officer, for your service. And I would like to invite the officer to receive a certificate of appreciation from me.
Anybody else like to address the council that's not on the agenda tonight? I see none. Move on for approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the council work session for April 13th, regular meeting of April 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Riappel?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Schedule of bid lines there is none. Scouted public hearings, there is none. Consent agenda, there is none. Acknowledged of receipts, reports of officers, boards, and commissions for regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for April 7th, 2021. Regular meeting minutes of Park and Recreation Commission for March 17th, 2021. Communication acknowledged of the mayor veto the motion approving forward the roundabout at the Bigland Road and Reinhardt Drive project as a 2022 federal project. Move on to old business. Reconsider approving moving forward the roundabout at Bigland Road and Reinhardt Drive project at 2022 federal project. Is there a motion?
I would move.
Clarence moves?
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Yep. You want to state your name and address if you want to come up there? You can take it off and talk.
I have no choice. I'm Gary Knuckleby, 704 Fifth Street, Southeast. And I don't think that roundabout is feasible there. There's a going to be tear up the whole community down there and it's going to hurt Ortons, the bank, traffic going all over. This is a bus route. And it's going to cost a fortune. Semis will not be able to go down that and make any turns because the fuel truck comes in off the goes, turns into Fifth Street into the gas station. And all the trucks that deliver groceries, they go out Reinhardt and I don't know how they're going to make all this roundabout. And the farm equipment coming through there, the tractors, machinery, trucks, semis. And I just think we can put up some stoplights. Save a lot of money. The money could be spent. There's a lot of streets that need to be fixed up. Lot of concrete busted up and you're hitting holes and everything. And there are saying only one business that got hurt, but to find all the traffic going all over the place, going to take time. Buses have to find new routes. And they got Kay's Cut and Earl, Senior Center, the bank, and Ortons. And you take part of Ortons, that's really going to hurt them. I mean, that place is busy, busy, busy. And I don't think that's a place for a roundabout. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Mayor.
Just a couple of comments about the action that I took here a little over a week ago. First of all, I do have a ton of respect for everyone on the council, ton of respect for the staff, as well as the contractors who advise us on these decisions. And I do believe that we need to improve our vehicular access onto Bigland Road, particularly in the morning, those left-hand turn actions, which we've always talked about. My concern is there may be a better way to do it. This may not be our highest priority. It may not be the best use of these funds. And we may be able to get to our higher priority, which I think is starting to show, and that is pedestrian safety at 13th, along with improving access. So there may be an opportunity to achieve both of those. And my hope with the action that I took on that day is that we can bring it back around, hopefully ask and answer a few more questions, gather a little more information, and come to a little stronger consensus of how we want to proceed. That would be my hope through all of this. And how that will go, I absolutely am not entirely sure, but I would love to hear the good input of all, all of you, all the council, all of the staff, community. I think we've all had a little bit of a mixed response also from our community. Some have said, you know what, I don't think it's going to work. I don't think it's the right use of funds. And others have said, you got to do something. It's just a fiasco in the morning trying to get on that road. And we're trying to hear all of that and trying to do the right thing. I think we do have to look at that close to $900,000 of federal money as also being local money. It's still taxpayer money. And if we use it properly, we'll use it to offset what would have had have been spent by our local tax dollars. So if we put that sum of money to its best and highest use, we can use it to offset some expenditures that would have had to take place from our local taxpayers. And so again, please know I have tons of respect in everybody that voted whichever side it would go. We'll come back to the table, I hope, and ask and answer a few more questions, flesh it out a bit more, and come hopefully to a little stronger consensus on how to proceed. Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess it's, I just have, I guess at the start, a question for staff. What, if this veto isn't overridden, what's the next steps for staff? And obviously, there's a request to be, do everything for everybody and do all the projects. What, how are we going to do that proceeding? I guess, to me, if you're going to do a roundabout it, you have to go down a track of land acquisition, making sure plans and specs are drawn up, all those things. If you do the other thing, you're going to have to go through the assessment roles, figure out what you're going to do to offset the other side of the road, and do plans and specs. Is the idea that you guys would just do all of that? So at the same time that we're doing special assessment hearings and all those type of things, we're also going to be doing land acquisition? Or what is your interpretation of what your role is?
I guess I will, I guess I'll start with that. In my opinion, with, so if the veto is not overridden, then what happens is the moving forward with the roundabout at Bigland is dead. I mean, it's been defeated. So at that point, we would have to either come back and look at going with 10th Street. Either we're going to pick up 10th Street and do that because there has not been a direction on that either. The vote was to go with the roundabout. So if the roundabout is defeated and not overridden, then that issue is really put to bed at this point. So we would then have to reconsider or go back and see if 10th Street would be a viable alternative. And personally, I think we're at the point now where, in the timeline, that we would, at the next work session, if so, if this is defeated at the next work session, I'll be bringing forward discussion on working with the other communities that are in our federal sub-target dollar group to see if any of those have a project that would be ready for the 22nd, for 2022. And we would maybe switch with them in order for us to have time to do that. I believe we're getting to the point now where it would be very hard pressed to get a project done for the 2022.
When do dollars have to be allocated for the 22, for 2022?
Do you know?
What's that, Mark? When do dollars have to be allocated?
We have to have a project memorandum into mendot. I believe it's by December. And we would have to have plans and specifications, the project bid by, I'm trying to recall, no, it was like April or May of 2022. And again, you know, like we've discussed, if we change projects from the Bigland Road, Reinhardt Drive Roundabout, again, we're going to have to go through the process of amending the long-range transportation plan and amending the STIP, which I think, when I reached out to Earl Hulgen, you know, kind of that entire process probably takes four to five months. And we could work on that also, I believe, as we're kind of working on the project memorandum. But, you know.
And I just don't know when it's going to get on the agenda there either.
What's that?
I don't know how much, how quickly it's going to get on the agenda there either. So.
Right. I think the point that David's just trying to make, I mean, we're kind of getting to the point where, you know, we're kind of at a stalemate and if we don't have a project, you know. So my thought was, because we do those, the federal sub-target funds, we get every four years, and they're basically moved around between us, the river, Croxton, and Bemidji. So my thought was just to reach out to those other three communities. I mean, if one of them had a project on board that they were ready to move forward with, you know, maybe they could utilize our funds in 2022 and then, you know, we would utilize their funds in 2023, let's say, you know, just to give ourselves more time to really decide what is the best project. But now, you know, kind of listening to the mayor too, you know, maybe, you know, Bigland and 13th is kind of coming to the forefront again. I mean, I know the round, or the traffic lights have been thrown out there. I don't think that they're warranted right now. So, you know, without it being warranted to be able to utilize our federal sub-target dollars for that traffic signals, you know, we probably wouldn't have been able to utilize those funds for that project, so.
Have you gotten verification of that?
I, when David, Nancy, and I met today, I was gonna just reach out to this Mike Anderson, again with the line to engineering. They looked at that in, as part of the Bigland Road study. At that time, it was not warranted, but we were going to just kind of reach out to him and kind of confirm that, Mayor. We may even have to go as far as doing a intersection control evaluation study, which I was going to talk to Mike about what it would take for them to do that to determine, again, if the signals would be warranted.
I would think before we, before we get too far ahead of ourselves, letting our sub-target dollars slip by a year, we come back together at a work session one more time and see if we can reach consensus within a timeframe where we can still modify the plan and get this into the program for that year. I feel like there's a good, good chance for doing that, and I think that that's what our community would expect of us.
And I think we can make that initial call because if those other communities aren't ready to move forward, you know, then I think, you know, we really have to put the pedal down and make some decisions and move forward because otherwise those funds, you know, we're going to lose them, so.
We won't lose them. For sure, we're not going to lose them.
Do you have any estimate of how much money you would have to turn back if you did something at 13th and Bigland or Greenway 13th and Bigland?
What now?
If, do you have an estimate of how much money we may have to turn back from the 2018 federal project that we did there?
I looked it up. We spent about $124,000 at Bigland and 13th in 2018, you know, to put in the medians and that flashing beacon system. Depending on what we went with, let's just say, I mean, if it was traffic signals, I'm assuming we could probably leave those medians in there. If we went down the road of, let's just say, a roundabout, you know, the medians, of course, would have to be taken out. And so, so, yeah, I am assuming that if we make some improvements there, there's going to be some of those federal dollars that, you know, we just spent in 2018 that we're going to have to pay back. And like I said, that was about $124,000 in construction that we did there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Roll call, please.
Can you confirm what the vote, yea or nay, means? So everybody's on the same page?
Sure. If you're voting yes, you're voting to override the veto. If you're voting no, if you're voting not to override the veto. Okay, roll call, please.
Helms?
No.
Riappel?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
No.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Motion is failed. Move on to new business. Consider adopted resolution number 21-05-29 approving the hiring of Megan McIntyre as administrative assistant dispatcher jailer at salary of 2130 per hour.
Move.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider proving the request allowing Spud Junior to hold a concert event in June and July. Is there a motion?
Move.
By Riappel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Helms, can I get a second? I have one question. During this June-July, I guess, did we talk to Mr. Emery regarding when the construction is on Demers? That's maybe a timetables that he has? Because that's going to be, have to be in consideration of what he's able to do there. I don't know if you're aware of that at all.
Is that now?
A junior wants to have an outside event, June and July. Yeah, so I'm not sure what timetables we have for the construction on Demers that would maybe affect those time periods.
I mean, right now, we're, we're in the process of getting contracts, everything in place for that project, so we haven't talked specifics yet with the contractor. I know Megan had reached out to me yesterday about, was it the Potato Bowl parade or whatever? But that was middle of September. And right now, we're, we have an August 1 completion date on that, so.
And we talked earlier regarding the Rockin' Up North one, try to move that up to August 1st, and I appreciate that, so.
No.
I just thought of that when he came, wanted to know if he could do something July, June and July. I'm like, well, what are we going to have for traffic down there and not traffic, so.
I do know one day that was suggested was a Saturday. Another day was suggested for a Thursday evening because there's a lot of people around here who like to leave for the weekend and he wanted to try and catch people before they took off for the weekend. So it may not always be on a week or weekend, but just bringing it before you. So if it's possible, if we can work with Steve, you know, is this something you'd be?
I'm all for him doing something. I just want him to be aware that there might be some issues for traffic down there and during the construction in that he should be aware of that and also maybe work with city administration and getting together with Mr. Emery of what probably might be happening during those time periods, so. Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. That was kind of my concern. And the other thing was if he was actually planning on holding this on the, on Third Street there beside his place, or is he doing this in the parking lot behind the mall?
The Third Street.
He is doing the Third Street?
What I was told.
Just like he's doing?
On May 22nd. I was told it would be the same each time.
Okay, then I would agree. That'd be a big concern, as President said, so.
Okay. Should we put, change the motion contingent upon, you know, working out with a traffic project?
I'm assuming that, you know, Third Street would be fine, but I don't know. But I just want him to be aware that there is going to be construction on Demers, so it might limit his access and how he has to get into that event. And especially if, you know, go to the south of him, how the access would have to happen there. So that would take into effect how we do traffic control for those events.
We'd be, we'd be closed right on, right at the third, just on the south side there.
Exactly, so. We wouldn't be able to have people walking up to his event that side. I know, Chief, you want to add something? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to point out that if this has a significant expected attendance, we should consider requiring them to have security there. The last one that they had two summers ago with Block Hawk was very well attended, and we did have two officers on there. And that was, in reality, the number of people they had, we should have had more. And that was completely on the city expense. They did not have to pay anything for that security because it wasn't required at that time. So I guess I would like to have us consider if he's going to continue having these events, that they should probably have to take on that expense.
I think these events are going to be smaller compared to what those were, but I think when Rockin' Up North happens in August, I think that also we'll have to address that. But I think.
Smaller events, we absolutely can just cover under most circumstances with regular staff. But if it's, you know, certainly an event the size of Block Hawk one, two years ago, we should have security there.
I totally agree.
So, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Demers?
Thank you. I agree with the, with the security. It's what we've required for anything. We've done the MMA stuff at the Civic Center, and we've required people to have their own security and things like that. Our police force isn't, isn't event security, and I don't think we should charge him with that task. I guess I'm just unclear, maybe, maybe I'm just a little bit dense, but what's the motion that they're asking? Just a couple of days in June and July, we're giving them carte blanche for, or is it?
I guess at this point, I'm just asking if you guys would be interested and like saying yes, we would be okay. And then he still needs to book, book events. So he was looking into book events, so I'm asking if you guys would be willing to close that down and once he has the dates lined up, then a special event application will come before you.
No, anything more specific, I guess we should give him a pretty vague response.
I think what we're doing now, I think what we're doing now, we're saying yes, you can hold them, but beware of that, once you bring your special event application forth, that, you know, it could be voted up or down. But I think having the security in there is going to be crucial, too. I agree. Even though I, you know, the last event he, I think he held down there was over 200 and some people. I didn't think we had any issues, but I get the point. I understand it. I think us saying yes, we're, go ahead and hold something wonderful, but I think getting that event application done and more specifics at that time, that'll be the official approval is what, really, right now, we're just saying, go ahead, if you want something, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Yep.
I know we're sort of tasked with looking at what, what can go wrong and, you know, making sure that we anticipate all of those things for a smooth event. And sometimes we may even gloss over or kind of move on by what a benefit it is. Every time one of those events is held in our downtown, you know, the number of people that come in and do the shopping down there and eat at the restaurants, maybe go to the movie theater. So every time one of these things happens, it's just one more really nice day in our downtown where people are drawn in and having a good time. And so I sure like, really, what it sounds like is we're all going to try to make it happen, even working around what bit of construction there will be. It won't be extensive construction on Demers, but it will be enough that it could impact it. And so I guess I can just say to anyone organizing events in our downtown and coming through this process, we welcome that. And it really is part of what makes summer in East Grand Forks a lot of fun.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess, my point is, is I don't think we should say, yes, you can have these events because we don't know what the events are. I think by saying that, you kind of override the, you give them some leverage on their, whatever. I think if we want to give a nod that says we're interested in doing these type of things, I have no problem with it, but I don't want to say, yes, you can do it without having the actual request in, is my point. I think in, in looking at this, and I haven't spoken to him, but I would imagine the big thing he is, is he just, he's trying to cover his butt if he wants to sign people, and I get that. But, you know, it's kind of a push-pull. I don't think we can give him just, yes, you're going to, we're going to give you the authorization no matter what. Because what happens if it takes him a month or something to book these and in the next two weeks, someone else comes in with a special event and they say, we want to do it? You know what I mean? We're not going to hold the whole months of June and July, and we're not going to, you know, hold up construction or do all these other things. So like I said, it's just, if, if the motion is to tacitly, you know, agree to do something with him, then yeah, that's fine, but I don't want to give him a yes because I think the yes comes with the special events permit.
What's in front of you too, though, is it also does say in there that they're asking before the band, book band, staff is asking if the council will allow these two additional nights of concerts. If so, once the dates have been set, a special event application would come before the council for final approval, so.
You want to make it contingent upon receiving special event applications?
Well, I didn't make the motion, so I can't really do anything. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I don't like, yes, I approve, and there's no real motion on the floor. There's no resolution here. There's, and I don't try to be, I'm not trying to be a stickamud, but if you do something and it's misinterpreted, it opens the door for.
I guess in all due respect to Mr. LaRocque, you have to have some specifics. You can't just give him carte blanche. So I mean, I think that the council's trying to tell him is that, yes, we are open to your events. You just need to give us some specifics so that we can act upon it.
And like I said, I, my point is, I agree with that. And I understand his position is, yeah, well, I got to, you know, cart before the horse or whatever, I get it, but start putting it together and start, you know, working with staff. And I can't imagine us not, but unless we see the specifics and can outline and give, and can outline and give, you know, specific, you know, directives on security or construction, kind of detouring and stuff, I don't think we can give a definite yes, I think. But that's just me.
So we have a motion on the floor right now. And a second, would the first person who's made the motion want to make the motion amended stating upon submission of special event application for final approval? Or do you want to keep the motion the way it is and then vote it down and say yes, go ahead and bring it back? You know? I guess that's your two options, I guess.
Yeah, Riappel is the one who made the motion, so.
I make the motion that, option number one there.
With the special event application?
Special event application has to be approved by us first.
Second that.
Johnson, just a second. You're okay with that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Consider adopted in resolution number 21-05-30, accepting and awarding the bid for improvement for the 2021 city project number two, trail improvements to op construction for total of $196,825. Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing a city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommend bills and payroll.
Move.
By Riappel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
All I have is, good to be back in town and ready to get back to work. Thanks.
Mr. Vetter.
Thank you. Megan, just clarify on the roundabout. Does that pass four to three?
It needed to have a six-one vote, Mr. Vetter, to override the veto.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Helms?
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief Hedlund, I just want to tell you, you got a fine-looking staff of young officers there. It's good to see that. And they do a wonderful job, so you can thank them for that for us. For in this day and age with things going on, it's good to see that there are still people interested in being a policeman, so.
Thank you.
Riappel?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
It's cleanup week, so the citizens can sure help out by not piling all their stuff against a tree or a mailbox or... So the city can come in and grab everything. Thank you. Nothing to anything.
Mr. Larson?
Just looking forward to the continued discussion at upcoming work sessions about our 2022 projects.
One thing I'd like to mention, like the new bulbs and the streetlights on my road, they look really nice.